Can everybody hear me? Give me a minute. Let us get situated here and we'll get started here in a little bit. I think we're all running late. We had to all go home and take a shower and dress up. So that's why we're running late.
Were we supposed to take a bath? I forgot.
Oh, you forgot to take the bath? You didn't get the memo?
It's not Saturday.
I'm gonna call the city council work session to order being February twenty eighth, year of our Lord, two thousand and twenty-three, three P M. Invocation will be given by council member Cornell, and then we'll start our agenda. Anybody wishing to join us for prayer can do so voluntarily. If you're wishing to join us for prayer, go ahead and stand up.
Dear Heavenly Father, I just ask that you look down on us today. Give us all the wisdom and insights and what we need to conduct the business of the city. I ask also as a special request just to make your presence here and touch everyone in this room and everyone that may be watching. I just ask for that you guide us in the name of the Lord, in Jesus Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you very much. You're gonna be seated? Okay, so item three was Aqua Texas Presentation, Presentation on Water and Wastewater Service Provider. Troy Hill is here with us, representing the company. There you are, sir.
Hi, Mayor. How are you?
We're doing good, sir.
Well, I have a flash drive here. Let me put this in real quick.
Do you have staff with you?
Yes, sir. I have John Andrews.
Mr. Andrews, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, sir.
Will you get situated? We're getting situated up here.
All right. All right. Technology when it works.
With a grant.
We brought a truck right out front, so it's full of water. So, Mayor, Council, I appreciate your time today. Very nice to meet you and to be able to present to you. My name is Troy Hill. I'm Municipal Partnerships Director for Aqua Texas. This is John Andrews. He is my boss. He is the VP for Business Development for Essential, right? So we appreciate your time. This is a presentation on water and wastewater and who our company is and what we do. We are a private utility provider. We're based out of Pennsylvania. We currently serve over three million people in about ten states, including Texas. In Texas, our brand, our division here is Aqua Texas. Aqua Texas serves about two hundred and eighty thousand people. We've been in the state for about fifteen years. We bought the assets, which is the utilities, from another provider. So we service about fifty-three counties in Texas today and again about two hundred and eighty thousand people. This gives you a little bit of an idea of where we're at. We do have a presence pretty much all over the state. This is an area that we're certainly wanting to be a part of as well. I'm gonna let John tell you a little bit more about Essentials, which is the parent company, and then I'll take it up from there.
Sure. Thanks, Troy. So Essential is a, like Troy said, we are a dedicated water and wastewater service provider. We are in ten states across the United States where we provide those services to about three million customers. We currently maintain about a hundred and ninety-nine, just under two hundred wastewater plants across our footprint and over twenty surface water plants across the footprint. One of the things we've highlighted on here is our state-of-the-art laboratory, which we built and put in service last year. That's so we could do our own water testing, which helps us, you know, devise our capital plans around our different, our different water systems. Troy talked a little bit about Texas. I don't know if you want to talk more about Texas. We are the largest investor-owned utility in Texas. Like Troy said, we, we, we serve just under three hundred thousand people, fifty-seven wastewater treatment plants here, and we're, we're pretty well dispersed across the state. So Texas is a big focus for us. It's a place that we've, we've continued to grow organically and through acquisition, and we're having a number of conversations with communities such as yourselves around the potential to partner on either their water or wastewater services. A little bit about us and how we're organized. First, I think when you think of Essential Aqua, we are a customer-focused organization. So we have our own call centers, twenty-four seven staffed. We take calls from, from anyone throughout our systems, and we are able to, to take those calls and route them to the correct location for whatever services. Move-ins, move-outs, if there's a water issue, a wastewater issue, we can get a tech out there, one of our techs, out there to, to reserve, to resolve the issue. The other thing that we were able to do because of the centralized customer service is provide a number of different ways to, to pay your bills. Online, credit cards, you know, all of that. But it's really, you know, a focus from our CEO down of how we take care of our customers is paramount to, to our business, our business model. And if anyone has questions, we're happy to field whatever questions you might have. From a reliability and emergency response perspective, you know, outside of our customers, our second great focus is reliability, right? We want all of our customers to be able to turn the faucet on, flush the toilet, have it work. You know, there are things that happen. There are main breaks, things like that. And it's really, you know, how do we respond to those? We always respond with local resources as quickly as possible. For larger cities like yourselves, you know, who, who have emergency planning-type boards, we will typically sit on those in different communities. So we're part of any emergency response that you may have, just things that may come up in the city or locality. Again, our emergency response, twenty-four seven. Because we have multiple systems, we can respond across systems. Actually, two years ago, when we had the ice storm, we actually brought resources in from, from Illinois, our other state, to, to support our operations in Texas. We had people, we sent equipment down, we brought people down just to augment our staff to try to get things on, back on to, back online as quickly as possible. So, you know, it's one of the advantages that we have, having multiple states, having people across systems that we can leverage, you know, our know-how and our people across those systems whenever there's an issue that we need to respond to quickly. We're talking a little bit about IDA here. But again, you know, it's really the ability to, to, to leverage all of our resources. We do this here in Texas. We've done it in North Carolina when we've, we've seen hurricanes. We've brought assets down from, from Virginia. We actually pre-position assets when we know there's, there's going to be an issue of weather-related or other issue in the area. I think our, our best example right now is, is in Ohio. We have two water treatment plants that are in close proximity, taking water off the Ohio River. So we have, do a lot of testing, given what's going on in East Palestine, which I'm sure everyone has seen with the, the train, the realm, that no issues for us. But we're actually doing testing for other communities in that area to try to help out, given the lab and the capabilities that we have. So we try to bring as much capabilities to our job as, as we can and to the systems that we serve. A lot of people ask about capital investment and how we invest in our systems. You know, one of the great things about focusing just on water and wastewater is, you know, we can invest a lot in these systems. As, as you can see, you know, in, in two thousand and twenty-one, we invested about six hundred million dollars across our systems. We replaced about seven hundred miles of pipe projected through two thousand and twenty-four, and we're projected to, to continue to spend at kind of that half-billion-dollar range in our system. So, you know, we've got the engineering resources in-house to do a lot of this work, to do a lot of the design work. And we also benefit from the fact that, you know, we, we can leverage our purchases across our systems. We're one of the largest purchasers of pipe in the United States. So, you know, it helps us to keep our costs down when we're investing in communities to try to maintain that reliability that we've, we were talking about a minute ago. These are some examples of things that we've done outside of the state here. Hendrix is, is a large wastewater treatment plant of ours in Indiana. Acibula is a wa, is a water treatment plant for us in Ohio. Both were, you know, fifteen, twelve, fifteen-million-dollar investments for us to, you know, basically keep up. Hendrix was absolutely to keep up with the growth in the area and to support continued growth. There's a lot of commercial going into that area, and we needed to basically double the capacity of the plant there to keep up with that. And in Acibula, it was really, you know, improving the system. It was a very old plant, and we needed to upgrade and improve the system to maintain our reliability to, to that area. Acibula is actually one of the water treatment plants we talked about that takes water off of the Ohio River. For regulatory and environmental compliance, I mean, it's, it's something we take very seriously as a corporation. We spend a lot of time and resources ensuring that our, our operations are compliant with all local and federal regulations. I think one of the, the great examples is PFAS. Not, not an issue I think you have a lot of here in, in Texas, but clearly an issue that we face in a number of our states in the Northeast. PFAS regulations have not been set at the federal level. They are still under consideration. The consideration was supposed to be at kind of seventy parts per trillion. We set a goal for our company in two thousand and twenty to ensure that none of our systems had a PFAS concentration above thirteen parts per trillion. So when you talk parts per trillion, we're talking about a grain of sand in an Olympic-sized swimming pool. I mean, it's, it's an unbelievable goal. And, and we actually achieved that goal about a year later to ensure that all of our systems are PFAS compliant. Whatever regulations that may come down in the future, we should already be compliant and, and actually leading the industry on the PFAS side.
If you're not familiar with PFAS, that is part of the contaminants, like non-stick pans, for instance.
I was gonna ask if you don't mind defining the acronym PFAS, at least for me. I don't know.
It's a very long chemical name. I could get it for you, but PFAS is considered a forever chemical. A lot of it dates back to, there, there's a lot of litigation going around the pot. It had its origins around Teflon. But it's also used in things, it was used in fire treatment, in some of the fire treatment foam and things like that, which seeps into the ground and literally is, is, is in a number of the waterways, particularly on the East Coast. Okay. Thank you. You wanna talk a little bit about community engagement?
Yeah, I'm just sitting being a statue right now. So as far as community engagement, and, you know, the reason we're really kind of giving this presentation, number one, we want to talk about who we are so that hopefully you can learn a little bit more about people like us, companies like us, and what we do. And then, why? Why are we here? Why, why would you talk to us? So I'll talk to that in a minute. But we do spend a lot of time in community engagement because when, when we become partners with the city, we, our people live in the city. We, we hire people from the city. We're gonna have a presence there. We're gonna have offices there. You know, people are gonna see our trucks around. They're gonna see our equipment around. So we want to be part of the community. We have a large philanthropic aspect to that, where we give scholarships. So we want the community to know who we are, and we want to be involved in the community as well. This slide's really important in Texas. It's fair market value. And so kind of the reason that, you know, we're having this discussion and this discussion is going on pretty much all over Texas right now. There's not enough water, number one, to meet all the growth that we're all seeing. And the amount of money that it costs a city to maintain and operate water and wastewater systems is putting cities all across the state in a bad position. This year, and I have the list on my computer that I wasn't able to bring up, but the Water Development Board, Texas Water Development Board, has over a billion dollars' worth of requests. They have about four hundred million dollars to give out. So they're not gonna be able to meet the needs. We had a water conference in Austin last week. PUC was there. This was for private utility companies. So why is PUC so on board? Because they know, the state knows, it does not have the money to meet the needs around the state. We see towns that are growing. I myself was mayor of the fastest-growing city in the nation, Leander, Texas, outside Austin. I never got a trophy, but I can tell you what I did get was we had to spend a hundred and fifty million dollars on moving a water intake. You know, it's a never-ending chore when you're growing like Texas is growing, the amount of people that we have coming in to keep up. So two years ago, the legislature passed what we call fair market value. And that is, that says that a private company can come in and offer a fair market price, sort of like your house. What would it appraise at, right? So if you were gonna sell a water system, you're gonna sell a wastewater system, a sewer system. We now can use a fair market value process to arrive at that amount. And it's a nice incentive for a city. I mean, the, the, the going rates in Texas right now are five thousand, six thousand dollars per connection. So obviously, you know, when you talk to cities your size, that's a lot of money. So there, there's a lot of reasons that, that a city might think about it. Certainly being able to monetize that asset that you currently have is a huge consideration. It's a game changer, quite frankly. And it isn't just the amount that a city receives. It's also the amount that you don't have to spend in the future. So my city spending a hundred and fifty million dollars just to move an intake further out into the lake that's going dry every year, right? That's not the answer long-term. So we've got another hundred million, and it's on, and it's on, and it's on. So it's not only the money that a city gets initially for the asset, it's what you don't have to spend in the next few years to maintain those assets. Fair market value gave us the ability to come into cities in Texas and partner with cities, and it gave the cities an incentive to do it by making it worth their while. And that's the process here. So it is, there are a lot of set-a-bys. This isn't anything that happens overnight. Nothing with government does. You know, PUC takes probably six months to analyze, you know, a deal if, if one is ever made, right? So it, you know, the, the process is lengthy, but there are some compelling reasons to think about it. And, you know, we'll go to the next screen. But this is what makes it possible. This is a copy of the, the Act in Texas that authorized it. So it's House Bill thirty-seven seventeen, and that was in the previous session of the legislature. Next. So what, you know, a couple of questions we get all the time. So you're a private company. That means that our rates are, would go sky-high, right? No. The, the state legislature left original rate jurisdiction with the cities, which means the city still sets the rates. That's a big key. Next. So why it makes sense? You know, hopefully you've gotten a, a little bit of information about us, our core business. We are a water and wastewater company. We're a hundred and thirty-six years old. We've been around a long, long time. We're the second-largest in the United States. We have a market capitalization of over fourteen billion dollars. Why is that important? Well, on a system your size, you want to make sure somebody has the, has the resources to spend in the future. And we do. And, and spending money on systems is not something that, that somebody has to tell us to do. We want to. We want to upgrade. Because we know over the long haul, we can run them more efficiently. We're gonna make sure they're best quality possible. So a couple of things on here about why. We also, and I don't think it's up there, every deal that we make has a buyback provision. So why is that important, right? Well, we feel like we can build plants cheaper than cities do. Why? Because this is all we do. We buy thousands of water meters, thousands of fire hydrants. We buy, we can do economies of scale and save money, whereas cities sometimes can't do that quite as well as what we can. So for, for instance, we built a surface plant in the middle of COVID on Lake Travis. Serves, serves part of the, the western side of Austin. And we built it on budget during COVID. We were two months behind, but we were right on budget. That plant would have cost a city probably, now this is a, a smaller plant, maybe a thousand connections. But that plant would have cost a city probably three million more at that time. And today it would be about five to six million dollars more. It's fully operational. I mean, literally, we have somebody that comes by and checks on it, but you can literally run it off your cellphone. It's amazing. So, number one, you know, we have the, the resources. There's protection for you. There's protection for your residents. So this is, this idea, you know, number one, that you lose control, absolutely not. You retain original rate jurisdiction. You retain the ability to set rates. You also have a buyback clause. So I can tell you over, we've done over three hundred and fifty transactions. It's in every one, but nobody's ever used it. So, but it's there.
And I think the, the important thing that Troy is bringing out is, is we have these conversations with a number of communities. I go to probably two of these types of meetings a week across our footprint. They always start, start the same way, right? It's, it's, it's always us coming presenting so you understand who we are and, and what we do. I think the one thing we didn't talk about a lot was, was our organization. Again, our corporate headquarters is in, is just outside of Philadelphia. But we have a full local team in Texas. We've got a president in each of our states, so we always have that local presence that's interacting with the PUC, it's interacting with the regulatory, the DEQ, and with the community. So there, there would be a president, there is a president, Craig, Craig Blanchett, couldn't be here this evening, here in Texas, that, you know, if, if we had a partnership, you know, the mayor would have Craig's phone number and be able to call Craig with any issue that comes up. I think the other thing Troy didn't mention, which is true on every transaction that we've done as, as a corporation, and this really comes from our CEO, we always hire all of the employees that are working on those systems. So every employee that currently works, and if we were to, to move forward with a partnership, would have an opportunity to join, to remain in their current position and join our team, which actually does give, and we've seen this across our platform, does give those employees opportunities for advancement through our company if they would so like to take up on it or, you know, additional training, certifications, things like that. So that, that's a question we get a lot, to tell you the truth. So I just wanted to make sure we, we hit that point, but.
Okay, so kind of what the next steps would look like, right? If, again, this is a lengthy discussion, so today's just a presentation, right? But what we do, I'm working with maybe five cities right now, some of them larger than you, some of them smaller than you. than you, some of them smaller than you. And um, you know, so what we do initially is we do what we call a Treetop, which is a high-level analysis of what the system does, the system looks like. We hire an outside consultant. It's not us, uh, well-respected in the industry. Uh, we give you copies of it if you want, right? So these are well-respected people, uh, and they're just going to pull any information from past budgets or CIPs, and they're going to come up with an analysis, right? They're going to give a best-case scenario of what the system's worth. That usually takes thirty to sixty days. Doesn't cost the city a penny, doesn't require any manpower, uh, no time needed from Public Works or anybody whatsoever. But uh, all the numbers can be pulled, and then we come back and then we present to you. Okay, based on what we got back, the assumed appraised value would be X, right? Um, and then the council would make a decision. Okay, we're interested, but we're not ready to commit. That's okay. Because the next phase would be a little bit deeper dive, and that's where, where our engineers would come in, and they, all they need is probably a day or two, in that they go with somebody from your staff to take a look at, you know, the wastewater system in this case. Uh, and then at the end of that period, which is again about thirty days, uh, we would come back and if the numbers kind of match up, then we would come back and say, yep, everything checked out, we think it's worth X amount, right? Uh, at that time, if the council is interested, um, you would sign a asset purchase agreement, then it goes to PUC for them to put their eyes on it. So it's not only council, it's not only outside consultants, it's also the Public Utility Commission that gives their final blessing, right? Um, so it is, there are a lot of eyes on it. It's not, it's not anything where n- nothing is in, you know, behind doors, it's transparent. Um, you know, I personally think there's a compelling reason for somebody just to take a look. Uh, and, and that can be one of several things. You know, the ability to meet future development, the ability to pay off debt, the ability to not have to spend money on massive upgrades to the system in the future. Those are all compelling things, in my opinion, why a city like Odessa would want to at least kick the can and see where it goes, right? And just see what the system would come back. No commitments. Um, and we, we're very transparent to the public about what it would mean for the public, but you know, look, I mean, we don't, we don't see a lot of cities run, you know, the gas companies anymore, the gas or the electricity. You know, a lot of cities don't make their own roads anymore. We contract that out. There's so many things that we contract out or that private companies provide for our residents. These items are kind of legacy items, but honestly, why? Why, why do you, why would a city want to if you've got a choice? Uh, because we give a ten-year rate schedule. So everything is agreed to before anything's ever signed. These are what the rates are going to be. And I think one of the things that's important is that, you know, cities have to start running utilities like a business because there's only one way to pay for the improvements that you're making, which have gone way up, right? We know the cost of concrete, everything's gone up. It's through rates, and I think people will accept that when they see what they're getting, when they know what they're getting. You know what I mean? So it, it's, you know, you, cities have to run it like a business. We do run it like a business. If there are a bunch of, you know, improvements that need to be made and rates spike up to pay for it, and then they go down. So it's pretty simple, but everything's laid out. We do a ten-year rate plan, and uh, that's part of the conversation when you're having it. But uh, at this time, I think that's uh, all I can say. Um, how about general questions?
Okay, counsel, we can go ahead and open up. Anybody wants to start to ask a general question?
I do have one to.
It is warming here.
I'm about to faint over here.
Councilman Canal.
Councilman Canal.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just had an idea. Thank you for the presentation. Um, I was just looking at the, if we were in a closet somewhere talking, I'd ask you about your business model.
Yeah.
Because that, that must be fascinating. The initial purchase of a city utility, that's huge to me.
Absolutely.
You'd do it every day, but is that a one-time purchase? Is that under an installment arrangement?
No, it's a typically a one-time.
One-time purchase.
Yes, sir.
And this is a personal question, but you're, gosh, are you working off of um cash reserves, lines of credit? How do you handle these large purchases?
So we're an investment company.
Okay.
We have at least a billion-dollar revolver.
Absolutely, sir.
And access to additional funds through the uh, I mean, we, we issue bonds all the time. If needed, we can issue equity.
So that would go in the same hand of um, with improvement cost when you get to that point, uh, to evaluate, prioritize, implement, um, the, you're comfortable with funding for Aqua Texas?
Absolutely.
Okay.
We're typically trying to find more projects to invest in, not less.
Amazing, amazing.
That's what our investors look for from us.
Thank you.
If a partnership became a reality, um, about how many jobs would this create for uh, the company and for the city?
So from our perspective, like I said, we typically hire all of the employees that are, that are with the existing system.
But you wouldn't know more or less a, for a city our size and.
What's their.
You know, that um, typically about fifty percent of employees. So let's say we just talk about a wastewater system, right? So you know, the, the city kind of gets the, the pick, right? Does that make any sense? You do. Um, uh, and so, you know, a lot of times if there are employees that are close to retirement, for instance, so maybe they need, you know, two more years of, of TRMS.
I think he's asking a different question, though. I think, I think to your question, sir, we would um, hire whatever employees would come with the system.
We hire all of them if they want.
But typically, a, a water and wastewater system.
You mean from within our own?
From within your own organization.
Okay, okay.
Now, as far as, as new jobs, those would be um, created by local contractors or engineering firms.
Okay.
That we would hire, because we hire locally to invest in the system.
Okay.
Initially, we would take um whoever's currently working with, and like, like I said, typically a utility department, you have people that work on both, so we'd have to work with the city to decide who came with the system or not. Uh, but we would hire all, we would give all the employees that are dedicated to the system, employee.
Yeah, that was a step I was missing in the conversation was that I didn't realize it would be from within our own employee workforce. And I have one final question.
First, sir.
You mentioned earlier that you've been in Texas for fifteen years, currently have fifty-three counties.
Yes, sir.
That you, that you uh, are in. Uh, in those fifteen years, have any, any of those fifty-three counties pulled out? Are they still with you?
They're all still with us.
Everybody's with you.
Yeah.
Okay.
You know, one of the biggest testaments to me, because um, when my mayor term ended and, you know, I was looking at what I'm going to do, I, I love cities. I love working with cities, right? So one of the biggest testaments to me was how many cities, for instance, have sold one utility and then come back years later and want to do another one. So what does that say? Didn't go badly, right? Um, but you know, I think, I, I think we've just got to put it under the lens of, you know, we don't bat twice thinking about a gas company doing gas, providing gas. So what is the holdover, you know, with water and sewer, for instance? You know, and does it, you talk about control and, you know, there's so many state regulations, just keeping up with TCQ regulations. It's overwhelming, right? So you know, in my opinion, a city is good at a lot of things, but I'm not sure a city can be good at everything. And that's okay. Uh, so find experts that are good and let them do what they do best, and that's what we are.
I have, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So you, when you talk about the rates, sometimes they increase, but you also said they decrease, which is encouraging because you never see anything decrease. Can you give an example of when they would decrease?
Yeah, well, we uh, when you see, again, um, we did a pro forma for another city, and so we actually were able to show how they were going to actually decrease, right? So it, every city's different, and we lay, lay them all out, like for my, my city, for instance. You know, we've got a lot of bonds that, that could be, that I'm probably going to run for mayor again. I'm announcing it today. Uh, of my city for twenty twenty-four.
Funny, I was doing it in Odessa, Texas, not in Andy, Texas.
That's right, not in Odessa. But um, you know, so for instance, I'm convinced we could sell a wastewater system. We could pay off the debts on the water system. I'd be able to lower the water bills by thirty dollars a month by doing that. So I mean, when you're talking about a hundred and fifty to a hundred and seventy million dollars.
That's huge.
You can lower tax rates, you can lower utility rates, you can pay off debt, debt service goes down. All those things can be passed down to the customer, right? I would certainly recommend that.
Thank you.
I don't want to get too complicated on rates, and, and Troy mentioned one way of doing rates, which is the original rate jurisdiction.
Yeah.
Which allows you to continue to, to have a hand in that. Um, and, and a lot of cities, uh, a lot of cities elect to do that, so you have control. The, the other way that rates can be set um is through our PUC um districts, right? Where we combine tariffs, and by doing that, we're able to leverage our cost for any one city's improvements across the entire uh customer base. So instead of, you know, potentially raising bills by dollars, you're raising them by cents because you have a larger denominator. But that's, that's something we can get into later.
Yeah, it can be confusing, but the, the advantage to doing that would be that you're spreading, so let's say that Odessa's system needs tremendous amount of work. It's going to be very, very expensive, millions and millions of dollars. Then that's being paid for by everybody, if you will, in the region. So there are some advantages, but we would just do a comparison, you know, whatever came out best for you would be.
So here's my question, you, because it was a little contradictory. You, you're saying we're able to set rates, at the same time you're going to give us a ten-year rate plan.
Yeah.
So uh, just explain to me how it works, that seems a little contradictory.
Well, those are, the, we would negotiate the rates with you for the next ten years. We would put a capital plan together. This is what we're going to be spending, right? So if there's a tremendous spend, obviously, then we're going to see rates go up because that's how you pay for it, right? Um, but we lay out a ten-year plan for that so that you can see, so there's no surprises.
So, so we would look to enter into a ten-year rate plan with you, not, not to set rates every year.
Well, that's what, that, that clears, that, that's where I was going.
I think that's where the confusion is.
That's where I was going, yes.
Yep.
Thank you.
So, so the scenario is this, um, Troy, we met last year, uh, can't remember. You, you were in the West Texas area.
He was at TML.
I was at TML.
No, but before then.
Yeah.
He was in the area. We met up at TML and introduced you to the council members and the staff was there, but prior to that, you were in the area, you dropped me an email. This was after our water break.
Correct.
And he said, hey, I'm in the area, this is who I am. And I think you sent me a couple of emails. Uh, I took the meeting, put you in there with staff, and we talked about this. We didn't go any further because at the same time, there was a proposal of exploring the sale of the Ector County Council. And I saw how that went, and I said, I don't want to talk about this right now. So when we met up back and uh, you knew that we were going to TML, we sat there at TML, we spoke, introduced you, had you make a pitch, asked you to contact the council. Now, for weeks after that, you were adamant about coming up, coming out, making a presentation. I kept putting uh, Troy off because I wanted to do a lot of more research. One of the things is, is that we're at the point where we're doing the Quality Alive Committee. One of the things is, is that we have to look at our infrastructure. Uh, Bob Garrington was done in the eighties, and so that's one of the proposals to look into. Investment's got to go in it, whether the city does it or a private entity does it. Rates are going to go up, whether private or the city does it. Um, we're consistently going to see rates on the water side go up. For one, when we were in the drought, and then there was uh, the rationing, and so there was a deficit. And so that's consistent. Now that we have in the construction done to a two and a ninety, ninety-five million, then the payback over a hundred and twenty million, well, all that's passed on to us, including us, we're all paying that rate. So this is part of it. Can we continue to, one, can we afford, can we afford it? Can we afford to observe it? One of the things that I'm concerned about is the workforce. How much further in the future, immediate future, can we continue to provide a workforce to operate that? That's, that, that worries me more than anything else. Uh, can a private industry do it better? I know difficulties that we're having across the board in every municipality and every private industry is having that same situation. So what attracted me to it was I had them present to the council, that, guys, what do you think? Is the council willing to kick the tires or is no commitment? I don't want anybody walking out of this, 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 this chamber thinking that we're selling the water system and that we're selling the wastewater system. Taking an evaluation as part of the Quality Alive as an option to look, what are our options out there? Because we have, you know, that's going to help us to make an assessment. I mean, they're actually helping us make an assessment of what we have out there.
Sure.
Because one of the things is, is that what are the capital needs are going to be? I don't know what they're going to be. I don't know if they're extensive, or they're mild, I don't know, but I know they're needed. And so that's an expense.
You know, one of the things you said in that, when you mentioned reuse, um, and I know we're, you're here talking about a sewer system.
Right.
But we at, we as a state, and especially in this region, you know, reuse has to be part of the equation. It absolutely, positively ha- has to be. Um, the city of Round Rock, which is next to my city, was able to reduce their drinking water, potable water, drinking water by twenty percent, strictly one reason, purple pipe, reuse. So that's something that we could help you with. So in other words, you know, if, if, if we did the, the sewer system, you know, we can design and help implement a reuse program that would help you reduce the amount of drinking water that your city uses, which I think is going to be important.
I know as a community, we're, we're wrapped around our, our water system. And you, you said, you know, what community is really wrapped their arms around their, their wastewater? And so um, you know, since this whole process, at first I thought it was a good idea, then I, I've gone back and forth on this thing, uh, listening to, to, to the community, listening to staff and their concerns. And so, but the thing is, is that we have to address this issue. We can't kick it down the can. Uh, this council's made a decision that's going to real, make a real assessment on all the needs that we have to, uh, we have to provide, water, sewer, roads, things of that nature. Uh, I'm interested to see what you guys would find, you know? And then, then it comes down to a decision, you know? Do we go into a bond issue and we, we invest in our, in our wastewater system as a city? Or do we wind up uh, going into a private industry selling it? Uh, we have to assess how much debt we have, what the capital, because we're going to have to deliver a, something deliverable to them, so we have a commitment uh, after the inspection on that. Uh, the capital that they put in that's going to be passed on to us as customers, even though it goes to Public Utility Commission, just like everything else when we do Encore and stuff like that.
Yeah.
You know, if we don't agree, then it goes to PUC and then they make a decision. And so it's created like, we, you know, we say you create another utility. Uh, is it worth the uh, is it worth the headache? Is it worth the effort to go and have them make the assessment? Because the narrative is, is that we're, we're, we're giving it away. Regardless of what we said, how clear it is, how many pamphlets we give away, narrative is going to be is that we're, you know, we're selling this and we're turning it back on our citizens, which we're not. We're trying to find the best scenario to. which we're not, we're trying to find the best scenario to, uh, to keep our systems going. And once, and I'll say right here, my biggest concern is our personnel out there. It's been a concern, it's going to continue to be a concern. You don't have a lot of graduates out of, uh, high school and college who are going into wastewater. It just not happen. And so if it's not hereditary, you go into it, you know? You know, there's, 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 there's no type of vocational class that are spitting out policemen either. And so, you know, it's getting harder and harder to find personnel. I don't know how you guys would do it. I know we have a difficult, uh, time doing it, and that's a concern. You know, for me, I'm, you know, I, I'm willing at least to kick the tires to see where we're at. But with the condition, people understand, we're not selling it today, and we're not committing to sell it tomorrow. It's just looking, we want an appraisal value of what we owe.
On that, uh, topic of the workforce, what is, what has been y'all's findings whenever y'all take over, uh, City Utility District, and you say that y'all usually just hire the, the current employees? Do y'all usually take all of them, or are y'all able to run it more efficiently before y'all maybe don't? And I mean, because then, then there's two problems.
So a couple of things. First, uh, Mr. Mayor, let me, let me commend you because, you know, as a community, and I, I talk to front of town councils a few times a week. Most of them had their, have their head in the sand on their, their infrastructure, right? They're not even asking the questions that you're asking and looking at and understanding the, the amount of investment that they need. So I, I, I think it's very forward leaning for you guys that you're, you're doing that, and I commend you for it. As far as, as employment, a cou- a couple of things. First of all, we recruit, and we actually have internships and apprenticeships at a bunch of different universities around the country. So that, that's how we bring people into the industry on the water and wastewater side and recruit people. Because you're, you're right, you have to actively recruit folks into this industry, and that's how we've been able to keep our staff, um, staffing levels pretty high. From an acquisition perspective, we, we, we always, and, and I'll say this, we always give everyone the opportunity to remain with the system. So we're not looking to come down here and take the system and say, okay, yeah, we can run it with three people. You've got twenty-eight and, you know, twenty-five people, get pink slips. That's, that's never something that we do. If, if we can run it more efficiently, we'll just wait for things to, to trick. People to retire, and we just won't fill their position. But we, we will give everyone the opportunity to, uh, to join us. And we've got opportunities at other places within the company. So, you know, if people want to move and relocate and look at a higher level certification or things like that, we have those opportunities, um, never mandatory, but always out there for folks that want to advance.
Mr. Mayor, um, we have, uh, lots and lots of water here that people, the oil field is trying to find places to put their produced water. Would y'all be willing to go in with these oil field companies to, to bring this water? Because we have so much of it that it would be beneficial to us to replace our systems here with this water. We'd never run out. We have that much produced water surrounding all the counties. So it would be a benefit even if we had one central location that was making water and pushing it out. If, if it was Odessa, Midland, or whatever it is, but there's, there's water here. There's a, a lot of water. We're not even touching that water because everybody's scared of it. But they're taking all the H two O out of it, they're taking all the stuff out of it, uh, the lithium. Here's something else that's in this water, it's called lithium, which you may, you make batteries out of. So by partnering with this, you're still getting your lithium out of your batteries. You're also doing this, but we're having drinking water. We have water now. I'm tired of drinking bottled water. Where I'm from, we drink, we drink out of the tap, and we drink out of, out of it. So that's back where I was from. I would love to have water here like that, so. But again, we have this, we have this, and there's money here to take that produced water and do it. We have some of the biggest oil field companies here to partner with. So my deal is, is to get in with this if we do something and partner with them. Therefore, they cover the expense of some of this, and you guys are making money off of it, and the cities are making money off of it.
I have to get some really smarter people on the water side to come and talk to you about that than I am, but I, we'd certainly look at that.
They're already doing it. There's people out here that's already, they're doing the water, but they just can't do it on a large volume basis right now. But they're out here. So there's enough of, everybody's trying something new into this, so, uh, that's where our water source could come from. We're not having to tap any more wells, go underground because the wells have already been done, the water's already coming, so.
So let me ask this, uh, of the council, we can wrap it around on an hour, and we still got a few, a few items. Council, where, where are we this? Are we willing to, you know, go forward? Do we want to empower the city manager to go into discussion with Aqua and do initial, a treetop assessment? So that we've spoken, and then when we get to, get back and they come do a presentation, where, where are we? I, I, I just want to be able to see if we can have consensus, because we do have someone that wants to speak about this. And I, I want to go ahead and bring him up right before we get into that discussion, because I want to make sure that he puts what he wants to do into, into the council and put this in the record. Michael Perrin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Just in choose, uh, full name, and just for the record.
Yeah, Michael Perrin.
Okay, so you got three minutes, go for it.
I'm, uh, seventy years old, I'm a lifetime resident of Odessa. My grandparents came here in nineteen forty-two. So we're nearly local. Now, I graduated from Odessa High School in nineteen seventy-one and taught there for twenty-one years. My degrees are in English, Economics, and Distance Education. Now, that's who I am. The city has built a good water system over the years, including the Colorado River Municipal Water District. Along with our neighbor cities, the current treatment plant serves about thirty-two thousand customer meters with about six hundred miles of lines. This is an asset and a great one. Nobody in business would ever advise you to sell an asset and then turn around and buy the product of that asset from the new owners. Makes no sense. If I were an Uber driver who owned my car and then I sold my car to someone else, and then I agreed to rent that same car from the new owner, no one would say, that's smart. Private companies like Aqua make a profit. A monopoly private company makes a substantial profit, which would be layered on top of the existing cost structure. If nothing else changed, then the price of water and sewer would have to increase to create that profit, perhaps ten percent, perhaps more. And that's just generically. This company in particular often seeks more than that, and they often get it. For instance, in Pennsylvania last year, water rates from this company increased by ten percent, and wastewater customers paid fifty-one percent more. This company has been fined by the state of Texas for not properly operating their wastewater plants in more than one location. Numerous Aqua facilities have had T C E Q violations, including a wastewater treatment plant in Hayes County. Other Aqua violations have occurred in Brazoria, Grimes, Harris, Parker, Polk, and Travis Counties, among others, according to T C E Q records. They're not popular with their customers either. Their Better Business Bureau rating is one point oh five on a scale of one to five. We had another out of town company try to buy our coliseum, and we said no. Say no to this as well. If any money needs to be borrowed for improvements, expansion, or repairs to our water system, then government entities like the city can borrow at much lower rates than a for-profit corporation. So please keep our property to ourselves, do what is needed for those thirty-two thousand customers now, and also for more customers to come. And let's let this out of town company go back out of town. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do you want to, uh, respond to any of those things on the T C E Q?
Sure. Number one, we buy distressed assets, and so guess what? They need a lot of work. They need a lot of work. There are muds, you have muds, for instance. And we bought a lot of muds around Texas. In fact, most of the developments are muds, right? So what happens in a mud? A developer builds it as cheap as possible, they leave, then the neighborhood runs the utility. The neighborhood doesn't have the money to spend on upgrades that are needed. And then years go by, all of a sudden, it's in terrible shape. We literally have the Public, Public Utility Commission that literally wants us to take over some of the systems. So I would say that it isn't where we start, it's where we end. And by the way, we do hundreds of systems around the country. But the ones in the news right now, Jackson, Mississippi, Flint, Michigan in the past, the city of Houston had a boil water notice for two million, these are all city-run systems. So just because it's a, a, a government run doesn't mean it's always going to be the best, right? When we make a mistake, when we have problems, it's splashed on the internet. And some of those, they're there forever, right? But I can tell you, I'll, I'll use my own city. There, we run one, a development right outside my city. We bought a system, and neighbors that are friends of mine were like, our water's terrible. And, you know, these are brand-new houses, so it's us, right? We went, we cleaned out the well, we got it up and running great today, and guess what? They're happy, right? Now, did we make a mistake by buying it? I mean, that's another matter, right? But sometimes we're into these systems before we know how bad they are. That's part of our due diligence process, and we do buy distressed systems, that's what we do. And we bring them up to speed. But John will say a little bit more about.
Yeah, I think the, the other question was the monopoly question and the for-profit company. A water utility by definition is a monopoly. That, that's true, you're right, sir. That's why we do not set our own rates. We don't get to set what we charge customers. It's either set by the P U C, or it's set through original jurisdiction in our negotiations with the city. So, you know, we, we can't jack up rates every other, every other year. For us to go through the P U C is a very public process. We have to justify every dollar of capital that we spent on that system that we would like to get put into rates. And the public has the opportunity to, uh, participate in that process. There are public hearings to ensure that we get to the right outcome. And they have statutory, uh, uh, agencies like the L O J to, and consumer advocate, to advocate on their side. So, you know, we do not set our own rates, we do not set our, our profit margins. Those are set for us because we are a natural monopoly.
Council, any other further questions?
I, I have just one, last one. Big picture, small picture. The, um, in respect that there needs to be a lot of number crunching, I respect that. But I think someone sitting at home would wonder what would be the actual increase on my water and sewer bill? You've, you've seen this happen in a number of cities. What would your guesstimate be for Odessa?
I don't.
That's, I know, a number crunch.
Yeah.
But there's still got to be a wild guess.
Unfortunately, that's part of the process of looking at the capital needs. So you have a C I P plan, and through the, the treetop and other due diligence, what we come up with is, okay, is this more than needs to be spent or less than needs to be spent? And when we come up with that number, then we're able to loo- to spread that out. Okay, here's what we're spending, here's what we're going to do in capital improvements, and then here's what it would be reflected in rates, right? So it would be a, a shot in the dark with a blindfold on to, to do that today, honestly.
I can respect that.
But I can tell you that, again, part of the negotiation is everything's laid out for everybody to see. So here's what we're going to spend year one, here's what we're going to spend year two, here's what we're going to spend year three. And, you know, I, look, I, I just totally look at it differently because of my experience. There's nothing inherently efficient about the way we run our system sometimes as cities. I'm talking about my city, for instance. We can run them very efficiently. That's where we make money. So if we can do, if we can build a wastewater plant cheaper than you can, and we can run it for less money, the small amount, yes, we are a for-profit company. That's insignificant in the grand scale of things, I can guarantee you that. Because the, you, water and wastewater utilities are not profit centers for cities because the amount of capital that you're going to have to spend constantly eats into any revenue that you make. So money's not free anymore, it's not one percent. So the cost of building, the cost of upgrading is increasing and will continue to increase. So that's where I would, would say that it's worth at least looking, in my opinion.
Mr. Mayor, I propose that, uh, we go ahead and, and take this first initial look for this reason. If we know what that plant's worth, and what they're willing to spend capital-wise, and that'll give us a starting point as to whether or not we might want to look at privatization or bond issue. And at least we'll have a number, and we can go at it from that, that just looks like that makes sense to me. And the one thing that was said that is, I believe is correct, we can, we can flow to bond issue, and if we can get one passed, uh, cheaper than probably using their money. But I, I think we have, I think in the due diligence piece of it, I think we, we owe the public the, the, the information anyway.
The information and the options is, is where.
Right, it's all about options.
Yeah, you know, here's our options. And, you know, and the thing is, is that something has to be done. That's why we're going to put it on there, and we've already, we've already delayed. I mean, we're already in the process of a water treatment plan. What we're speaking, I know from, I'm speaking from here, is just the wastewater.
Right.
Not, not the water treatment plan. I know I've communicated that with Aqua, that it was the wastewater, waste water, and want to make that clear again, it's wastewater, the sewer plant. You know, we have the, uh, Bob Derrington, you know, and also in that question is that, you know, we also have that, uh, Pioneer that we're treating also. And so I, I want to address that issue because we can't lose that money. Because that's what we're using to expand, uh, you know, new lines for new development. And so that, that's another equation that we have that has to be addressed. And, you know, staff will be able to address that with you. I'm with Councilman Thompson. I think that we initially just, uh, allow us to kick the, to kick the tires, so to speak, and then come back and revisit what findings they have. I'm, I'm, I'm willing to, to, to go that far at this point. So, council.
I agree.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Gentlemen, it was a ben- a big hour, thank you for coming down here.
Thank you.
I don't want to ask you if you have any more to add because you just might. We're going to move on to item four, discuss entering a letter of agreement with J S A Architects to provide architectural service pertaining to Odessa Police Department pedestrian bridge. Mr. Anderson.
Good afternoon, council.
And Mayor, I won't kick this can down the road too far, so. Is it feeling a little cooler?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You noticed it too?
Yeah, I called it in and said, drop the chiller's down a little bit, so.
Hey, that's right, you're the man.
This work session item is, uh, will allow the city to enter into a letter of agreement with J S A Architectures to provide an architectural service, uh, study pertaining to the Odessa Police Department's walking bridge. That walking bridge goes from the second story of the parking garage into the second story west entrance of the police department.
There's a seepage going through the concrete on the surface.
We've got seepage going through the con-
I saw y'all excavate it here one day.
Yeah, after the last earthquake, we noticed some, some panels on the bottom side of that bridge start to fall down. So we took those panels off, and while we exposed in there, showed us that we've-
I don't say that because the insurance won't cover.
We've got, we've got, we've got some, some water damage in there. So what I'm wanting to do is, is get J S A Architecture, along with Neiman Engineering, to come in and make an assessment of that bridge. Tell me if it's structurally sound, can we still use it? Can it be repaired, or do we need to replace it? Right now, currently, it is closed off, and we're not utilizing that bridge, so. We did do a study on the entire parking garage back in nineteen ninety-one, but it did not, uh, cover the bridge, uh, in that study.
And the amount is, uh?
Five thousand dollars. Yes, sir.
Council?
Sure.
Okay, there's a consensus, go ahead and move forward.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We're going to item five, discuss extending the yearly contract to preventive maintenance and warranty on our Zoll Medical cardiac monitors. Travis?
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, constituents. Uh, I'm here today to propose, uh, for your approval on the decision- on the decision to extend our yearly contract for pre, preventive maintenance for our Zoll cardiac monitors. Um, we, we've been with Zoll for over fifteen years, uh, very happy with the product. Uh, Zoll monitors are cardiac monitors that we run on our patient's E K Gs. Uh, they have built-in, uh, A E Ds, uh, they take blood pressures and several other type of diagnostics. Um, we use them quite a bit and with that comes a lot of, you know, maintenance requirements and preventive and even repairs. In fact, I just got one today in my office that we just got returned from repairs. So, um, we've, we've had this service contract for over fifteen years, um, very satisfied with it. And I'm just asking here for your approval to extend this warranty for, for this next coming year.
Counsel, any comments? Consensus to move forward?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
We're gonna move on to item six, discuss the adoption of revised master thoroughfare plan M T P to consider modifying the master thoroughfare plan. How?
Good afternoon, Mayor and counsel. This item was discussed at your last, um, work session. And I've got copies here. So this was discussed at your last work session. It's basically, uh, there were four scenarios about this area dawn south of Yukon and, and sixty-first street west of, of dawn. Um, and so this was the, the scenario, I think, that was favored by counsel. Three, yes, sir. Um, and, and I've drafted up, actually G I S drafted up a, um, version of it. Now, the, the, the ver, this is prelim, preliminary. And this is for your next council meeting to, uh, decide on. But, but what I did was I actually eliminated dawn between Yukon down to sixty-first off the major thoroughfare plan. And sixty-first west of dawn, I downgraded from a arterial down to a collector. I just wanted to clarify this and make sure everything was on board, everybody was on board. Or if, if you wanna retain that dawn as a collector, I'm just thinking as, as that area south of dawn develops residentially, if, if a collector right there at dawn where it was proposed would actually work with the developer. So this, this allows a little bit more flexibility. I don't know if Aaron wanted to add anything to it, but I just wanted to get your feedback before we come to your next council meeting with a, with a proposed, uh, master thoroughfare plan amendment.
I didn't wanna add anything to it other than I agree that there might need to be a little bit of flexibility. For instance, when the developer goes to make the plat, is dawn gonna align exactly where we put it now or just a little bit to the west of there? So I think this captures it. But, uh, if you wanna see an actual collector on the, um, on the thoroughfare plan, we can certainly put one there. We just, we can't tell you right now that that's exactly where it would be.
So by making it a collector, you're talking about, it was gonna, it was gonna be five lanes through there. So now you're talking about pulling it down to three?
Yes.
We talked about that in our meeting the other day. Uh, so that, and we have to build it, is my, as I understand it, we have to build it to the east side of the road away from the slay mire. The, the, but there is a third lane down, about halfway down that starts on dawn. So it's gotta be on the east side of-
So what we're talking about is actually the part of dawn that would be on the south side of Yukon, not on the north side of Yukon.
Well, we're talking about doing away with that, though. I mean, dawn will come down.
But, but what you're showing in here is gonna be pretty much close where you're proposing it, but not moving it east or west.
Correct. Yeah, there, uh, uh, what's shown here, there's no dawn south of Yukon.
Right.
Correct.
No dawn south of Yukon, right.
Correct.
Right, that's, because Larry agreed to that. He's okay with that.
He's okay with that.
Because Tanglewood is gonna come all the way through on the other end to Yukon, and I'm pretty sure-
Yeah.
Is what-
As he develops-
As he develops, yes, 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 yes.
But at, at the last council meeting, this is the scenario we kinda spoke about. Uh, but you're proposing, we, we're still at a five lane. Now you're going back to a three lane, if council wishes to.
On sixty-first.
On sixty-first.
Yeah, 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 yeah. And, and nothing, nothing, dawn wouldn't even be shown on the master thoroughfare.
Okay, so, yeah, the dawn will go off totally then.
Correct, south of Yukon.
South of Yukon.
So, until I feel about sixty-first, because we, we, we agreed to a five lane because of the development. Are we willing to, uh, make a, give flexibility to go from a five to a three?
That was always my thought process, doing it three. It didn't make any sense to go to a five because it's gonna be all residential. I know, I know east of, uh, Grandview is gonna be, uh, commercial. We're gonna need the five, but I just didn't see the point of having a five-lane road in.
The commercials on the west portion.
And the other, and the other point, getting to your point, is sixty-first west of dawn, there won't be a connection between-
Right.
Right.
Sixty-first and the county.
The only ones going in there are gonna be people living there.
Correct.
So it's not gonna be a high-traffic area.
Yeah, there won't be a physical connection of sixty-first west into the county. Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
I mean, I like it, yeah.
That's what we're talking about, right?
Yeah.
So then this is, this is how we'll proceed for your next council meeting for the-
Twenty-eight.
Uh, major thoroughfare plan change or-
For the twenty-eight.
Adoption.
Counsel, any other further discussion?
No.
Yeah, we're good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item seven, discuss the purchase of a hundred face mask for O F R firefighter P P E equipment. Mr. Ritchie, how you doing, sir?
Uh, Mr. Mayor. Uh, attending councilmen and women, um, city manager, thank y'all for allowing me to come up here. Uh, so this is for the consideration of purchase of a hundred face mask, uh, for firefighter P P E equipment. Um, we use these face masks whenever we go into any atmosphere that's immediately dangerous to life and health. Uh, since the purchase of our initial S C B As, we have not done a large replacement of face mask. We've just done a lot of repairs. So we are, uh, requesting to use the money that we have with, uh, Station Six budget, since that's our designated S C B A station, that, uh, the, the monies is gonna come out of there.
And this is in, uh, forty thousand?
Uh, yes, sir. The total price is forty thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars. That includes one hundred mask and fifty R F I D tags, which we use to communicate with our radios via Bluetooth.
Okay. Counsel, any discussion?
Just a curious question. Um, are they, um, carbon, they're just for fire and smoke? Can they handle chemicals?
No. So if any, if we have to do any kind of chemicals, uh, we have hazmat suits that we encompass ourselves in as well as our S C B As. But if we're dealing with chemicals, we always wear the S C B A plus the outer shell that we have.
Gotcha.
Any other questions, comments? We have a consensus to move forward?
So.
Thank you, Ron.
Thank you.
We're gonna move on to item eight, presentation discussion of identifying roadway projects for future council consideration and prioritization. Mr. Kerr.
Good afternoon, Mayor and counsel. I've got some documents to give you, so you'll have copies of kinda what we talked about, talk about, and then I've got a little presentation. See, I found out. Make it a three-lane road. That's what maybe, there's only three lanes right here. Yeah. Turns into three lanes right here. There's a curve around like this, you know. It's good. Thanks, Tom. So, uh, I guess I'll go get back to Mike. I know, but I gotta get up and fix it. I feel like I'm turning. I think I'm okay, Tom. Unless you've changed it. Uh, I don't know. You don't know? Did you? Okay. I'll get confused and, oh, which one's my? Thank you, Tom. Who sits here during the week? Thank you, thank you. Touch my chair, you're killing me.
I say it's, I say it's stoker.
Fifty seconds.
Probably stoker.
Yeah. Cause when I pull this up, it goes down.
I vote for new chairs.
Second. I'm giggling. It's overstuffed a little bit. These get kinda tiresome. All right, thank you for the opportunity to, uh, present this to you. I met with, uh, Mr. Uh, Councilman Connell and Councilman Thompson here recently. Uh, as part of the Quality of Life, uh, subcommittee, I suppose, on the, uh, roadway projects. And so, um, was going to provide what we've kind of identified as a staff and then in discussions with them, projects that we are aware of that, that you may want to consider as to whether they're your priorities or not and how we fund them in the future. And associated with that as well is, um, uh, if you have other projects, please let us know. Uh, I can tell you there are more projects that can be done than can, one, be affordable at one time, but also be recognized all at once. And so quickly, I'll just go over the funding background or kinda background of what we're doing right now. Uh, talk a little bit about our maintenance plan real quickly. The main topics are the roadway rehab and the roadway growth, uh, program. So currently, the council provides us about six million dollars a year in funding for roadway maintenance. And we use as much of that as we can to do some roadway reconstruction as well. And so, uh, one of the things y'all may note on this is from time to time, you'll see the street maintenance budget need to be rolled over. It's sometimes it gets as high as, say, ten million. We're doing design work at, at, as we can. And then once the funds become enough that we can do reconstruction projects several, then they'll dump out. But, um, some, uh, we're trying to get that leveled out, but it does sometimes build up a little bit and then we dump it. Like this year, you've seen quite a few projects we've, we've picked up. Thirty-first Street, uh, Meadow, Tanglewood, those are projects we're doing with that. Um, and we have Crane coming up, but we don't have enough free money for Crane yet. Probably be in the next full year, but we might make it this year. So when we look at the six million that we get, uh, six hundred and seventy thousand goes to, uh, traffic signalization projects. So right off that, we will pull that six hundred and seventy thousand out. Annual maintenance, this includes things such as seal coat, rejuvenation, friction seal. Uh, actually, we, uh, so we usually do about anywhere depending with two to three and a half million. More often closer to three to three and a half million. Uh, th, this year, um, you're going to see tonight awards for all three of those projects consideration. And the total this year for those is about three point two million. And then the six hundred and seventy, that puts you right up near four, four million. So we have two million dollars remaining that we try to utilize on reconstruction projects as we can. Roadway, so these are the four different areas that our funds really go to altogether, or things that we work with. Roadway rehab, reconstruction, these are the aging roads which we're going in and rebuilding them. We are not widening these roads. These are strictly for reworking paving. And typically, right now, we're doing a lot of reconstruction, full reconstruction. But we are trying to see if there's ways we can do mill and fill that'll still survive. Sometimes the base is beyond really keeping, so you do, do full. It's risky if you don't have a good feel for the base, right? You don't wanna go out there and spend two million dollars just doing the top and then end up not doing well. It's just too much money to put out there if you aren't sure and you make sure and do a good job. Uh, roadway widening, these are the new roads for growth. A lot of these are ones that, or some of these are ones that exist that already need reconstruction anyway, but because they are widening, um, uh, I'm calling them a growth, growth roadways. But however y'all wish to look at those is fine. So this is a map of, uh, just of our maintenance projects over a five-year projected schedule. Uh, different colors, you'll see a little legend over there. Some of the colors will be based on the year and whether they're rejuvenated or whether they're seal-coated. And this is just a plan. It moves and it changes, but I'm just giving you kind of an idea over five years, the different places that we may have hit. Okay. This is the list of- Did I change maps? Okay, there we go. So this map shows a list of the projects that we've got identified. And, uh, so that list is numbered one down to about twenty-five or so, twenty-three?
Twenty-three, twenty-three.
And those projects are, again, um, in a type of priority that we, we see. This priority can shift, but I'll show you on the list here in a minute how, how we're doing that.
Mr. Kerr, let me ask a quick question. How do you determine that these are the roads that need to be done? I mean, what, what matrix do you use?
So, uh, it's primarily a visual. We go out and we're watching the streets and we see how many potholes and things we experience as well. But, uh, you can see the cracking and things that are happening on the streets and, um, the, the difficulties of ride. Um, uh, you'll see that. So we kinda prioritize these based on how, how heavily that road is utilized as well. In other words, there are many of these roads, and I'll show you on that next list, that are actually in what you might call similar condition. How do you pick one over the other? And, uh, that'll be up to y'all in the end, but, um-
Yes, sir.
Um, so say, uh, one, something to watch for when you go out, and you may wanna look at some of these roads. Some of them may not have been seal-coated recently and they'll be pretty apparent. You'll see the actual cracking and things like that pretty easily. Say Eighth Street, I drove it the other day west of County Road West, I think. And, um, if you watch, and that's, I, I, I think it's been seal-coated, but if you're looking at it and you'll see all those crack seal lines on it. I mean, there's, it's really a deal where we just left a little pavement in between all the crack seal lines. And, and so that tells you that obviously that, that paving structure on the top is not doing well. Other things you'll start to see, sometimes you'll see cracks that are routine going across the road. They may show some dust-looking dirt coming out of the lot. A lot of times, that's base that's actually starting to come through. The, 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 once you start having cracking, start having cracking, then you have water penetration. And water penetration is the true damage that you're going to have. It'll make your base swell, shrink, or freeze and thaw, and it starts to tear up the roadways. And so those are the things that we look for, uh, generally. You will see some too where it'll look like there's a, it, it'll be a pattern on the tire treads and it'll look like you have a, a dark diamond-looking spot every, just boop, 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 boop like that. And that's areas where that's starting to give, and so your base is probably starting to fail in those conditions. So, uh, the next sheet is that list again. The top four, we just have on there, but they're all under design or construction. Uh, of course, that's the ones we just mentioned. The area in kind of yellow, um, those are ones that, um, you know, I, I would say they're all in distress. Are they all gonna fail tomorrow? No. But they're all in distress and they do require, you know, us continuing to maintain them. May require us to seal coat them more often. And seal coat starts to become a cost that's not real beneficial. It just becomes throwing it on there so it, it looks okay or stays. But, um, Twenty-third Street's kind of a collector, uh, from Andrews Highway to Dixie. It's looking pretty, pretty poor. Um, so the project number, I added a priority list number versus a project number because, uh, we kept changing the map, so we had to change the numbers. And so right now, I'm doing it this way. Fifty-second Street, um, really all the way from Andrews Highway over to J B S. But, uh, the places that I see it looking the most, uh, challenged is from Dixie to Grandview and Grandview to J B S. But each of those projects are about five million dollars, you know. So, uh, the numbers that you see here are conservative numbers. I don't have a real good feel for estimating project- I don't have a real good feel for estimating projects anymore. We just, we just get hammered sometimes, but we're expecting, these should really be a little less than they are, but I won't, I won't promise you it won't be less, so. So, we're a little conservative on our numbers, we hope. Billy Hext is another one that we've seen damage in. Looks pretty rough from one ninety-one down to Eastridge, and then Marco down to Eastridge. Also, in that area, when we had the winter storm a couple of years ago, if you were around that area, we had some huge blowouts out of the street, and they were pretty bad-looking. But we patched them and everything, but I mean, just indicated to us there's concerns there. Eighth Street, as I just mentioned, definitely see a lot of cracking in there. Sixteenth and Harless. University on the west side, there's an area there that would be good for us to address. University east of Grandview, you'll see a lot of, I mean, they put a lot of seal, crack seal in it. And it's heavily road, heavily used roadways, all these really are. And then you have some Eastridge segments. The ones at the bottom in gray are important, but they're not, I don't know that we've seen them at the same level of need at this point.
Can we just do north Dixie?
We did north of Forty Sixth Street. This is from, this is actually crossing Forty Second. And so, this one's, the road's a little bit stressed on the north side, definitely. We have a lot of drainage that comes across there, but Forty Second Street is a state, so this one's kind of, we identify it as maybe something that needs to be watched, but yeah, I wouldn't put it at the top of the list personally. It has, but it has a lot of water that goes across it.
That was close, I mean, this is more like a hundred million dollars.
Yes, sir.
A dollar, a dollar, a dollar tomorrow. They have the dollars tomorrow, we don't know.
Yes, sir, so it is, yes, sir, about ninety-one to a hundred million dollars. The six million dollars that we have, there's a couple of ways to look at this. As one is you can do, try to get bonds to do it quickly, or however you wish to do. Another way is with the six million dollars, if we were allocated additional millions each year, then, you know, say over ten years, you could approach trying to get a lot of this done.
We'll have more deterioration there, we can keep up. You know, in order for us to even get close to keeping up, we have to address, and a bond is the way to go. You know, so, did you guys get together and this is a priority list pretty much?
Yeah, we broke it down into, you know, reconstruction, because, for instance, you keep going back to it, but from Fodry to three thirty-eight, which we bought from the county, or annexed from the county, is just awful. And with the school, and then with Billy Hext down to the one ninety-one. Billy Hext is halfway finished, the other half of the lane's never been finished. And that's just a huge traffic area, you know. And then that next overpass, see, that's the other things, that overpass at three thirty-eight that we talked about, it's almost, it's getting close to getting finished. Once that happens, they're gonna, Texthott's gonna want, cause I was with an MPO meeting the other day, and I met with Eric, and they're ready to move from Yukon and three thirty-eight down to three thirty-eight and fifty-six, Fifty Second Street. So, if, whenever that gets going, you know, how do we get ready for that end of?
That end, our end of it.
Our end of that deal, because you've got Ponderosa sitting there, Ponderosa access, plus the school, people going out to Fodry, up and right, anyway, it's just a high-traffic area.
Yes, sir.
It's just awful.
But off this Crane Avenue, I thought we had already put money set aside for that.
We had, no, sir. We have intended to use the maintenance money, and so we're watching our projects. So, when we do a project, we'll put aside contingency as well.
Okay, so we put, so we haven't, we haven't put this off for our FBRQ yet?
Oh, we've got it designed. It's pretty much designed, we're just doing the final touch-up on it. It is gonna require utility work, quite a bit of utility work. We're probably gonna end up with about one and a half million dollars worth of utility work.
Are we separating that? Cause I don't wanna, I don't wanna go down the road that we went on Fodry, where we put it all in one package, made it more expensive. Are we separating that? Are we doing utilities and binning that out, and then bidding out the road? Because if we put it together, and correct me if I'm wrong, the cost goes up higher. So, the thing is to limit, because you're putting it as a big package, and the price goes up. That limits how many companies can bid on it.
I think...
So, if we separate it, we have more companies bidding on it, we have more competitive prices and competition, can we lower the price, or get a better price?
So, I would, my personal recommendation on Crane is that you would do it as a single project.
Well, I understand that, yeah.
But for the reasons that, so if we go bid it as a utility project, and then you're gonna have to wait until the utilities are completely done by another contractor, but before you can bid it again.
You still have to wait for the utility company to do it, even if it's under the same general management, but we're paying an extra twenty-five percent?
Yeah, but they'll move on a lot faster, and it's not an extra twenty-five percent.
Okay, how much would be, how much, how much actual would be paying?
Well, I don't, I don't know, there's a lot of utility work in that project. It shouldn't be extensive. In other words, if the contractor who's gonna do the utility work has enough work, that he's not just adding, he's not just coming over for a small job, he's doing a big job, that it's probably not gonna be that significant a difference.
And there was a significant amount of work on Fodry, and that what made it more expensive? Cause we pulled it together.
Okay, we'll bid them separately, I'll just need to separate the designs.
I'm asking, is it possible to look at it? There's no sense in that, sir.
It's always, it's always gonna happen.
But we're just trying to see we can save some money here.
Yes, sir, I understand, yeah.
Can I, so...
I'm sorry, sir, I'm just trying to tell you what my perspective is.
I see the biggest road on my side of town, which is West County Road. I see intersections coming across, but nothing being done on West County Road.
County Road West, yes, sir, I don't know, intersections?
Yeah, you're just doing the intersections.
That's a state, that's a state road.
I understand that's a state road. Have we spoke to anybody about the, this road is, this road is disintegrating all the way.
Sir, I can tell you.
This road is in worse shape than Fodry will ever be.
I'm going to tell you all right now, you have my immediate notification of retirement. I've been through enough stress, I thank you all very much. I give you two weeks' notice as of now. Thank you.
Okay. All right. I guess we can't ask questions?
Yep.
Sir? I understand that. No. I haven't been here, here, I have not been here, years. I was just asking about one, one question. Is it possible to be able to pull utilities and...
And I thought you did.
Okay.
I just told you that my perspective on the project would be that it would be easier to do it.
And I, and I said I understood that, and I wasn't disagreeing with you. You know, I was just basically asking a question. I can't ask a question, it seems like we can't ask questions around here. Cause I'm trying to understand, can we, could we save any money if we pulled the utilities? I, that's what, that's my question. Can we save, and if we could, how much could it be?
I don't know that I can tell you exactly.
But is it a possibility?
Certainly, it could be a possibility, I have no idea. I mean, I'd have to bid it both ways to actually know. But y'all may not recognize, but we are under a tremendous amount of stress.
We probably don't, under, recognize, and that's why we're asking the questions of you. You're the expert here, sir, so we're asking you to help us. Understand.
I'm trying to help you.
Yes, sir.
I'm trying to answer your questions.
Okay.
I'm, you don't know how much I try, because I do love this city.
Understand, sir.
I don't live in this city, because the house I could get when I came over was in Midland, okay? But it has nothing to do with Odessa or Midland. I needed a house that I had four kids and a wife coming with me, that I didn't have to reconstruct. So, I'm just giving you that perspective.
Okay.
But I love Odessa, I've worked very hard for Odessa. I spend all my time trying to...
We appreciate everything you do, and we appreciate what you're doing. There's no, you know, and we apologize if I'm making you upset, I'm not trying to make you upset. And I apologize for the comment, but the thing is, I'm trying to understand, because we try not to stay in silos. So, we get...
Oh, I understand.
We get hit from every, everybody, left and right.
Certainly.
If you do this, if you do that, if you do this, if you do that, you'll be able to save, save, do this, do this, do this. Okay, so we're trying to understand.
Sure.
Can we save a dollar? Can we save a dollar? We wanna look at that option to save a dollar.
Sure.
The option is, is I don't know how things are bid, and I'm asking a question.
Right.
You know, and you gave me, you gave me your, you know, your recommendations to keep it together, because it'll move faster. Completely understand it. I just wanted to be able to ask a question and be able to get a feedback if it's possible.
Sure.
That, that's it. You know, not feeding any more into it.
True.
Not making accusations, didn't know you lived in Midland, I don't know about how that's part of the conversation, but, you know, Mr. Kerr, you know, you're a valued employee, we value what you do.
I appreciate it.
And I don't want you to upset saying that we do not.
I understand.
You know, the thing is, constituency is asking, cause nobody knows what...
Sure.
A treaty road is. And so, if you look at County Road West, is it state? We don't know that. It is true, we travel down, I look at roads all the time.
Sure.
And said, man, you know, this is bad.
Well...
Sure. No, no, we're good, John, we're good on that.
Part of it, sometimes bidding them separately comes out well. Sometimes it doesn't. You've got a different contractor there, now when the second contractor gets on there, he's upset because he doesn't like the way the guy made the trench repairs. Or if the, or if the roadway does sink a little bit, he'll say, well, your previous contractor didn't repair the trench well. And there's gonna be a lot of line of waterline being replaced on this project. And so, for me, having one contractor, and I say, general contractor, you're responsible for whatever the sub did. It's still under you, I don't have to try and fight between different companies. There are, there are different aspects that you go to. Sometimes the dollar bids may look less, but your personnel time in trying to get things done, and your inconvenience to the public can be more sometimes. So, it's easy for somebody to say, hey, the bid's less, we saved money. But that's not always true. Sometimes you spent money somewhere else. University was one where we did utilities first, and we had to. That one, that one definitely made more sense, because you needed to move things out of the way before you could widen the road. But every one of these projects has different aspects associated with it. And so, yes, sir, I mean, I can't tell you whether it would actually make it less or not, but I'm happy to look at it, or we're happy to look at it, they're happy to look at it, whatever.
Yeah, that's, and the reason why I'm asking that question is, cause you wind up having people call you, and they, and they said, well, I got this package, and start breaking it down. You're trying to figure out, okay, so, yeah, what they're saying is making sense. But what they're saying is also a benefit to them. And that's why I was asking this question.
Sure, sure.
You know, you hear these things about, you know, well, we all know who the two, two big patriot people are here. You've got Reese, and you've got Jones Brothers.
Sure.
And so, in Midland, they had a hundred million dollar, you know, bond issued. They're hearing, all these contractors hearing that we're looking at doing roads. Everybody's, you know, salivating on it. Everybody wants to be able to get the most of it. And so, they start putting these scenarios of how, you know, city, they're using city Midland as an example of how it's divided. I don't know if that's true or not. You know, apparently this person knows a lot more than I do, I can't confirm or deny.
I think Midland goes in and does a fair bit of their work. I don't know if it's just because they think the price is going to be less, or if it's because certain work is extremely difficult, and that, say drainage. The drainage work that they've been doing, they did over on Midkiff and Garfield a few years ago, and that went on forever. But yeah, I mean, I'm not, it was a difficult project, it's not Midland's fault it went on forever, but it was a difficult project, and so they...
Well, another scenario is that if you wind up breaking the bid packages in smaller bids, it gives you, it gives a lot, a lot of mid companies an opportunity to bid on it because of what they can bond, because they can't bond fifty million dollars. Is that true? You know, is that possible? But, and in doing so, does it create a headache? Does, is there a real cost savings, you know, for, in doing that by breaking it up? Does that cause more issues, does it cause more delays? Those are the questions I'm trying to get to.
Sure.
It gets difficult, you know, to be able to sit down, and be able to sit down with you, one-on-one, and ask these questions. This is the opportunity that we have.
Right.
And so, I'm trying to ask questions and not trying to be judgmental.
Sure.
I appreciate you answering my questions. I know it's frustrating, because it's frustrating for me to be able to try to figure out what these guys on the side, left and right of me, behind me, in front of me, and trying to validate what they're saying is true. And, you know, and the thing is, a lot of times it comes with suspicion that the city does things in a nefarious way. Now, I don't know how they got there, maybe it's been, you know, their experience in the past. But I try to assure them, this is not what's happening here, you know. And so, he goes, look, I'll ask the questions. And so, you know, you're doing a wonderful job, I don't want you to go anywhere. Don't, and I doubt if you're getting frustrated with this, but the thing is, is that we're trying to, there's a reason why we ask the questions. It's not to try to interrogate you, it's just we're trying to solidify what people are telling us.
Sure.
We got people coming at us, you know, a hundred people coming at us at a time. I'm exaggerating nonetheless, but it's an example. Let me tell you, it's frustrating.
Yes, sir.
And you walk away, and you're scratching your head, and you're writing down these notes, and you're trying to remember everything to ask.
I've been doing it thirty-two years, and government, from when I was a child, government is a bad thing. But I was raised with respect for government, okay? Nobody likes paying taxes. Nobody, I don't like paying for groceries, I'd love to have them. People, but I was raised with a respect for government. My grandfather was an entrepreneur, he was a county judge, he helped establish a county, Terrell County, Sanderson, Texas. I grew up there in a business, I was raised into business understanding. And then I've worked in cities for thirty-two years. I love working for cities, and I love talking about what I do, and I love talking about what we do. But cities, because we're doing something.
Yeah.
We're fixing roads, we're putting in roads, we're doing things. It's, that's what I enjoy.
Mr. Kerr, Mr. Kerr, as Councilman for District Three, I'm not gonna get involved in personal matters, but I'm gonna ask you to rescind your retirement notice. I for one would not vote for it.
District Four would like to request the same thing, and at the very minimum, sleep on it.
Sir, to sleep on it. Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Would you mind?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. I appreciate all of your concerns, and infrastructure is very important. Tom is very important to the organization. He's very important.
I appreciate it.
And I appreciate everything you do, Tom. And I just want to let everyone know how important he is to our organization.
I think we recognize that, City Manager. And, you know, the thing is, is that we really are serious about engaging into this ninety-one million.
Yes, sir, yes, sir, I appreciate that.
And we have to do something, we can't Band-Aid it anymore.
Right, no, it just gets more expensive and worse.
That's exactly right. And that's why we wanna be able to put it on there, that's why we want a solid plan, that's why we put the committee together to seriously, you know, this is, this is not something we're looking at like, eh, let's see how we cut it down. But we're seriously looking at this.
Sure.
And we, I know I'm gonna put it, every effort to go in there and try to, you know, to promote this before, you know, we... Because there's a certain point, we can talk about it, and then there's some point that we, as a council, have to get out, we go down to bond issue.
Yes, sir.
I really feel that we have a solid plan, and we go out there and we educate and inform the constituency, that they will, they'll, they'll support this.
Yes, sir.
I know that we're not gonna be able to cover everything, because what's gonna happen, everybody's gonna look at this list.
You can't build them all at the same time.
That's exactly what's gonna happen. They're gonna look at this list, they're gonna say, you know what, my street's not on there well. How many miles of street do we have, we can't do it all.
Right.
So, I wanna be able to keep the six million, the four million that we're doing now.
Sure, yes, sir, I appreciate that.
And continue that, but this is into addition.
Yes, sir.
Will this cost a property increase? Yes. But that's why we're looking at options, waste water versus the street, and things of that nature.
Yes, sir.
And so, you know, once again, we, we're not asking you to leave. Sorry, you're frustrated, you're important to the organization.
Yes, sir.
And so, we definitely wanted to keep you on, I'm gonna echo what, you know, the diocese is saying up here.
I appreciate it, yes, sir.
Mayor, this is, just as a side note, I've been paying, you mentioned Fodry, and so I know somebody talked to you about splitting those services, but I'm out there every day watching, at least weekly, and watching the contractor that's doing the work for the utilities, and Corey Jones, who, with Jones Brothers, and watching how they're working together in putting in those box culverts lowering the street. I mean, it takes a team, I mean, on that road, I think we did it the right way.
I've been...
I mean, they've run into a lot of problems.
Yes, sir.
And, cause that CRMW D line wasn't exactly where it was supposed to be, but...
Yes, it is.
Imagine that. But anyway, I'm watching them work in concert, and, and I'll be real honest with you, I have a beer with them about once a week. And we sit there and talk about what's going on, so they've been educating me, so I know what's happening.
Yes, sir.
And I think they're actually ahead of schedule.
Those, those contractors seem to be doing a nice job, and they're working well together. We appreciate that. And the project itself, the big boxes and stuff, you really couldn't do them without doing the roadway at the same time.
Mr. Kerr, are you gonna still stay on for us to give us an impact fee presentation?
Yes, sir. Do you wanna see the, the next map and thing is on new roadway construction?
Okay.
What we're calling growth-oriented, I'll touch on it real quick. But, so this is, a lot of these roadways come off the impact fee study itself, but identifying roadways that are needed based on growth expect... but identifying roadways that are needed based on growth expected in the next ten years. And so, um, um, you'll see, uh, up in the northeast, of course, Yukon Fifty-sixth Street, Billy Hex from one ninety-one to fifty-six. You've got Grandview and Dawn and, uh, Yukon work and things like that. These add up to about, uh, total of two hundred and sixty-three million.
All together? Today, today.
Yes, sir. And so these are, uh, uh, as I said, quite a few of these are identified in the, uh, in the, in the impact fee study. And they're kind of listed on where we see them coming. And, um, yes, sir, they, uh, I, I took a couple of them off that y'all talked about also, that are coming off the Master Thoroughfare Plan, sixty-first and, uh, and another one.
You took those off, and it's still two sixty-three?
Yes, sir. These projects are large enough that we couldn't do them with an ongoing budget anyway. You're talking fifteen to thirty thousand on most, thirty million, fifteen to thirty million on most of these.
Yeah, the average cost is like twenty million for each project.
It's high. It's real high. We have a couple of opportunities, Mayor, you know, uh, Representative Langraft, there's this, his, uh, Texas Strong bill, which is gonna provide, since they're capping out the rainy day fund at the state, they're expected to this year. He's trying to get some, I talked to him last week, and they're trying to get some of that money to municipalities for infr- infrastructure, 'cause they know that the oil patches beating up our roads, and that severance tax that we're sending to Austin, we're not getting our fair share back. And I was in a, uh, MPO meeting last week with Eric, the district, uh, what is he, Tom, district supervisor for Text Dot?
Yes, sir.
And so, you know, one of the ideas I floated out with him was, would Text Dot take Yukon, for instance, all the way from Parks Bill to three eighty-five? What they want in, in exchange for something like that, is for us to take over another road.
Yes, sir.
And so, you know, I, he said, well, that's an interesting idea. And I said, you got, 'cause they're getting a whole bunch more money for this district in the next ten years. So if we could get them to build some roads out like that, I mean, Yukon itself, um, our deal here is-
Talking about swapping, doing some swaps.
Do a little swapping, because we could take on Fodry Road from one ninety-one to Business Eighty. That's in the city right now. Text Dot's taking care of that road, and it always has, 'cause that was a, it was a Text Dot road. But that's one that's not that long that we could, you know, and that, there's overpass getting ready to go on there, they're getting ready to start that, on Business Twenty, going over to I twenty. So there, several, there's some other op, I guess I'm just saying there's some other options out there that I've been kinda talking to people about, seeing what the best way to do it is, and can we get some help, find some, trying to find some money.
Yeah.
So, that's all. I'm just sharing with you what I, what I've experienced in the last week.
So we're looking at two sixty-three on top of the ninety-one, if we were to look at the whole package?
Yes, Mr. Kerr. Some of those on that two sixty-three are fairly far out looking, but there have been, say, say there's one that's, um, on the far east? But it's a county road called out. The road does not exist really, but it's that north-south roadway. You see the little, it looks like a Y there. The Y portion, the, 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 the curved portion is Yukon, uh, which has been extended and built, but if you, uh, in the future is expected to be a wider road. Now, the, the vertical portion, there's been some development proposals out there in that area in, in recent years. Uh, they haven't moved forward on, or are not in fruition at this point. We don't know if they're still thinking about them. But they were considered something that may occur, and so the roadway is-
That, that's the one that Larry Bell's doing, back further north?
Uh, this one down lower, I think was, um, um-
It's ICA property.
ICAs, yes.
ICA properties, okay.
And then Larry Bell's are those, that one that kinda loops around the top. Another thing about some of these is that if the developer gets to it before we do, they participate in the roadway, and we may par- participate in some of the cost. So some of these are developer, more developer driven, but if they have to be done before the developer actually starts working, the impact fee implies that we will de- build them as they're needed, and so that, uh, that, because we are taking dollars from people for the roadways, so.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
That's pretty, that's pretty complex.
Tom, the council has another, an appointment here at, uh, at five o'clock that we have to get to.
Okay.
So, you know, I, I'm gonna inconvenience you. I'm gonna go ahead and ask for the council to make a motion to table item nine, uh, for the next meeting, uh, because if not, it, it's pretty lengthy, so we can go ahead and take the, uh, the, the information. We can go ahead and read it, formulate your questions, and we'll put it back on the next work, uh, work session. Uh, so I'll need a motion for that.
I'll make a motion that we table the impact fees to the next work session.
Okay, we have a motion for item nine to be tabled. We have a second.
Second.
Second, we have a motion by Councilmember Swann, a second by Councilmember Martin, all in favor, all in favor of indicating basing eight. All opposed in indicating basing eight. So the items, uh, item nine is tabled to the next work session. And then put that one on, on the front end.
Put it on the first, number one.
Kill the next, the next work session.
Because it, it, it pretty simple. It'll be good if new guys could read this first.
Seeing that there is no more, and sorry, John, we're just gonna have, have you come back?
Oh, no problem, sir.
Okay, so seeing that there's some more, uh, business before this, uh, council and this work session, I have, do I have a motion to adjourn? I have a motion by Councilmember Thompson, a second by Councilmember Swann, all in favor indicating basing eight. All opposed in indicating basing eight. Motion passed, we are, we are adjourned to, for an hour.
I apologize for games for it.
Oh, you're all right. You're good.